All right, I see I'm the host now, I'm gonna share my screen.
Well, I can call in any door in the meantime, uh, four ten. Uh, announcements, this meeting is accessible by remote participation, instructions are on the posted agenda. Uh, reminder to subscribe for email town news and announcements on the town website. Uh, we have one item for regular business discussion, a draft Weston and Sampson report regarding potential water testing at Dole Place. And then we have representatives from Weston Sampson here. So Sarah, you said you have a presentation you wanna start with?
Yeah, is it sharing or not yet? Let me see. Okay, let me try again.
I'll also, um,
The meeting is being recorded.
Uh, we also have, uh, two members of the Board of Water Commissioners and the Water Superintendent here.
All right, I think we can probably get started and I'll keep an eye on the, the list here in case Kevin's able to join us. Um, so I do know, so Weston Sampson was asked by the town of West Newbury to look into the Dole Place well field and do a peer review study of the information collected to date, uh, and one of the items that came up uh, during our review was the, the sea level rise, which I know, um, we had discussed, the town of West Newbury requested us to look at uh, an elevation of, um, for the year twenty one hundred, uh, looking at an elevation of the hundred year flood elevation at this point, um, plus six feet. Uh, so when we started looking at that, we also, um, looked at some of our own data and collected information that we had available. Um, and we did get, uh, following our preparation of a draft memo, we did get some supplementary information from Angus regarding uh, where the information came from as far as the assumptions about the sea level rise. Um, but we did wanna get into a little bit more discussion about that, uh, and I think Kevin, can you hear me? I see you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hey, everybody, sorry about that. Having a little storm. Um, so, I don't know what you said so far, Sarah, but, um, we, I just put a, a quick little PowerPoint together today to try to, um, concisely and clearly uh, give a, an understanding of, uh, what we're talking about with respect to sea level rise. There was some confusion, um, in the beginning, which we have resolved, which was, I wasn't quite sure what the, um, what the reference material for the source material for uh, what you wanted to use, which was six feet above the current hundred year flood plane. And we, with Angus's help, we, uh, identified that resource. Uh, and essentially that was the Newbury Report Climate Resiliency Plan. And as you can see on your screen, um, what they use, let's see if I can, I need to move this on my screen. So that I can view it. So what they used was a, um, the global and regional sea level rise scenarios from the U.S. that were developed in two thousand and seventeen. So essentially that's what they adopted, and as you can see on the chart, uh, from the year two thousand to the year twenty one hundred, uh, there's, uh, you know, a rise of, uh, let's see, one point five, I'm sorry, point two, point eight, one point seven, uh, three point one, and then finally the six feet is what you were looking to use for seable level rise condition, uh, at the site at Dole Place. Um, and what we have been using, uh, and we've been using for the city of Boston for a variety of other clients, um, in Massachusetts is, uh, kind of summarized from the Massachusetts State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan, which was put out in twenty eighteen. And essentially, we're using the high emissions scenario that is identified in the, the red oval down below, which, um, is essentially an extremely unlikely to exceed, um, given a, a high emissions pathway. It's a ninety nine point five percent probability it will not be exceeded, so it's a very conservative estimate, of course. Um, and they're slightly different numbers. Um, as you can see, twenty thirty, twenty fifteen, twenty seventy, twenty one hundred, we're looking at a maximum of seven point six feet above current sea level. So it's a little bit higher, um, compared to what Newbury Port is using, and of course, it's a, it's a newer model. Uh, the twenty seventeen model was updated for the Mass State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan. Um, so it, these are ever evolving conditions, uh, as you can see. And, uh, the next slide kind of looks at a comparison between the two models. And you can see that, uh, on the right is the State Hazard Mitigation Plan, on the left is the, um, Newbury Port's guidelines. Uh, and at the end of the day, at the year twenty one hundred, we're looking at a difference of almost two feet in those projections. And I might add that, uh, as with any model, the further we look out, as you all know, the less confidence we have in that result. So, um, looking at a difference of two feet can be considerable with respect to a planning horizon, but what I wanna offer to you is, um, maybe a conversation regarding that planning horizon. And, uh, on the next slide, I'm just trying to summarize what, uh, the state is recommending for a design horizon for most municipal projects, um, across the state. So when you file for a MIPA permit in Massachusetts, they're gonna recommend that you now use the Resilient Massachusetts uh, Design Standards and Guidance. Um, so this is a report put out, uh, in twenty twenty two last year. Um, and I might note that, um, my colleagues here at Weston and Sampson, um, helped put this together. And the, um, recommended planning horizons are summarized in this table. And you might notice for, uh, the end of the useful life column on the left, um, there's a, a recommended target planning horizon output on the right, uh, none of them go past twenty seventy. So, uh, there aren't many, you know, municipal infrastructure projects that are, um, really thinking about the year twenty one hundred right now, uh, for a variety of reasons, one of which is not having a heck of a lot of confidence in that end of the model range. So I just wanted to put that out for discussion. We have so far kind of used this six foot above, um, flood plain elevation as a guide, um, I think on the next slide, we're providing a cross section of a site through Dole Place well field. And we're looking from on the left northwest to the right southeast across the Merrimack River. Um, the, the brown line on the top, it's a regular little line, is basically representing ground surface and the bathymetry of the river. Uh, the Dole Place well field is called out with the, a red line there, uh, representing one of the wells. Uh, there are min and max groundwater, uh, observed groundwater elevations from the pumping test back in twenty sixteen. And, uh, for that same period of record, the tidal range that was observed for the pumping test. And then superimposed on that above there is the current FEMA hundred year flood plane of sixteen point eight feet. And then the estimated six feet above that, uh, or twenty two point eight feet above that for the year twenty one hundred. Now, in both cases, you know, Dole Place well field is underwater during a hundred year flood condition. As you might imagine, now, when, when Angus and I were walking the site, you know, we asked the landowner if they've ever seen a flood, uh, you know, basically encompassed that entire area, and yes, he had, it's a Mother's Day flood, um, many years ago. So, um, that area has already seen a flood condition where water surface, you know, Merrimack River water So, um, I think that, oh, we also provided one additional figure, I think, as requested by Mark uh, in our last meeting, that is essentially just trying to identify areas that, uh, would be inundated in year twenty one hundred under a hundred year flood condition. So those areas are outlined in blue on the map you're looking at on the screen. So with that, I will, uh, kind of put it up for discussion or questions. Um, so we can, essentially, the purpose of this meeting, my understanding, was to kind of come to a conclusion on what model you would like us to use, um, and in doing so, we can finalize our report and recommendations on the Dole Place well field, um, and then provide costs to you in that memo as well.
So Kevin, this, this, uh, graph map that's up there now, um, I'm not seeing what, uh, you know, able to attach this to the geography of West Newbury, I mean, how much of the, the shoreline of the Merrimack River does that cover?
The purpose of this map, as, um, requested by Mark, was essentially to try to understand where would we need to move infrastructure associated with the Dole Place well field to get it out of harm's way during a hundred year flood.
Okay, so this is just the Dole Place area?
Yeah, it's, it's a few hundred feet on either side of it.
Oh, okay.
See the three yellow dots, so do the three wells, I believe. I think that was in the, uh, report, I think, all, or like that plot, or, or, I think, derivative evaluation, that helped, I, I, I mean.
Yeah, I, I just misunderstood him, I thought he said that it looked at a larger area, so, um, okay.
Yes, the, 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 you know, the, uh, lower right hand quadrant is the, the, the string that,
Yeah, okay. So, um, probably start with questions or comments from the board, and then we'll ask people here, and then if anybody online has, uh, questions or comments.
Yeah.
So, um, Karen, I, you know, I understand what you're saying about, you know, most, uh, in most cases for, uh, municipal infrastructure projects or, or, you know, with, whatever government, form of government, you know, whether, whether it's, uh, state or municipal, um, that there's, uh, low confidence in twenty seventy is generally used as the maximum horizon, or appears to be the maximum horizon, and, and I, I guess my thought on this particular, if this was simply an issue of infrastructure, um, then I, 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 quite likely, I would buy into that timeframe. Um, to me, if we put all our eggs in the basket of this particular well and we're counting on it effectively supplying the town for as long as the town exists, um, that, you know, we need to be exceptionally conservative, um, because if we lose our water source at twenty seventy, um, you know, then, then we're in a real pickle. Um, and, and, uh, I mean, every community that, you know, is affected by sea level rise will have the same, um, the same issue if, if they're looking at water supplies that might be affected by sea level rise, so, um, I, I guess that's why I, I seem to be that twenty one hundred was not an unreasonable, you know, it's seventy six years out, seventy seven years out. Um, uh, obviously none of us are gonna be around, but hopefully other people will still be, um, and, and, you know, it's, you know, if it was simply a case of, of, uh, having to, to rebuild or fortify or, or protect somehow a piece of infrastructure or relocate a piece of infrastructure, and, and there was a, an appropriate spot, then, you know, that I, I, I would be more comfortable, you know, being less conservative. But I, I don't look at water as an infrastructure, as infrastructure, as a resource, and it's, if the resource, you can't relocate unless you find it somewhere else.
Sure, and, and that's absolutely the town's prerogative to make that decision and be conservative in that estimate, uh, and make those decisions. And I'm trying to provide the, the most information for you to help you, uh,
Yeah, yeah, no, this is great, I know, I'm, I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to explain, you know, the, the perspective I have personally on it.
Kevin, can you kind of share with us some of your other clients, how they manage this? Are they looking at twenty seventy, you know, a hundred year plus three, or, or what kind of metrics are they using?
I'd say the biggest client that I've been working with is the city of Boston, we're, uh, redesigning Mowgli Park, which is a sixty acre park just south of the city, and, um, uh, as you can imagine, a sixty acre park getting redesigned, uh, is a, is a, is a big investment. Um, and so they wanted to have an understanding of what sea level rise impacts might have, cause it's a coastal park on that design. And so, um, after many iterations and conversations with the city, uh, and stakeholders, we ultimately decided to go with the twenty seventy projections, um, for the redesign effort. And, uh, the construction effort is gonna be tens of millions of dollars, um, so it's, it's not insignificant, it's not an insignificant decision. I'll say that, um, so they have decided to go with twenty seventy. Um, because they understand, I guess, from their perspective, uh, things may change with respect to the modeling, things may change with respect to the use of a particular area, um, especially in Boston. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I hope that answers your question, uh, there are a few other clients, um, uh, that are on the water supply side of things, uh, that are also using the twenty seventy projections. Uh, not as many of them, I would say, are coastal, um, so this is a little bit different. And you are more vulnerable, vulnerable here, being so close to the coast, uh, from a water supply perspective. Um, so what I was trying to do in the report, um, and, and will ultimately try to provide information for you, is what kind of a normal operating condition looks like now and into the future, whether we're choosing to go with twenty seventy or twenty one hundred. Um, and then what a flood condition is, you know, certainly, as you saw from the cross section here, the hundred year flood plane is already above ground surface. Um, you know, we're, we're designing plants, um, that are within a hundred year flood plane, um, you know, every day, all the time, we're, we're significantly, we're, we're always designing plants in the flood plane, we're often finding new water sources adjacent to, um, surface water bodies that will be and are being impacted by sea level rise and climate change in general. Um, so, you know, just because a hundred year flood plane is above ground surface right now, doesn't prohibit moving forward with infrastructure projects in those areas. Um, when you're looking at six, seven, eight feet above ground surface, that's a whole another story, uh, you know, you're not gonna elevate that building ten feet in the air, um, well, I suppose you could, and that's an infrastructure side of things. But your water quality and water, um, supply yield would be significantly impacted by that. I think most significantly would be the water quality concern. Um, the only impact from sea level rise on water quantity, if you can imagine, is if I have a static water level, um, that's ten feet below ground surface now, um, that's only gonna come up, uh, in the future. And that would allow for more available drawdown in your well, which would ultimately increase the yield of that well. So the yield is probably only gonna go up. However, um, salinity impacts could slowly inundate this area and cause, uh, sodium and chloride conditions to rise. Um, uh, those would be the significant impacts, it could be treated, um.
I, I would just note that the water quality data we have right now, that was collected at the site, I think, seven years ago, the salinity at those test wells was already over what the guideline for Massachusetts is. Um, it wasn't actually as high, though, as the current water source in West Newbury, um, so it's, it's something that, uh, Mass DEP issues a guideline for, it's not a strict regulation in the same way as other contaminants. Um, but, you know, you already see the impacts of the salinity at this site, and it, as Kevin says, it would only get worse, um, with the sea level rise.
It, uh, it seems likely that the current, uh, salinity is not affected by, um, you know, by the ocean, but, you know, by, I, at one point, I reached out to USPS trying to find out if they had any data on the river, and, and, um, they had no record of, you know, there's, 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 there's not a whole lot of sampling points, um, and there was one point um, farther downstream in Ainsbury, um, where it sounded like there had been one or two occasions, you know, in certain conditions where, um, uh, they, um, their sensors had, had, you know, I guess, based on conductivity, had, uh, determined that, you know, there was, um, some salt water impact, um, you know, limited and for brief periods of time.
I would say you probably have salt impacts coming in both directions, both from, uh, incoming tides, um, as well as from upstream, uh, the Merrimack River has a humongous watershed, um, that, uh, is the ultimate discharge point for groundwater in, within the watershed. Um, knowing that all the way up in, you know, Manchester, New Hampshire, uh, there were sites that were, or water supply sites that were already impacted by high levels of sodium and chloride, um, mostly associated with nearby highways. Um, but that will travel downstream, uh, and as you can imagine, from between Manchester and West Newbury, it's a long way to go, collecting perhaps more and more salt along the way. So it's not only coming, you know, from the coast, it's coming from upstream as well.
Kevin, the study you mentioned that was, uh, from two thousand and eighteen that these numbers are based on, do you know if the state has plans to redo that, or, you know, when that will be updated?
Great question, and yes, they do, and it's this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so this may all change again.
Yeah, it's, it's a moving target.
Yeah. Angus, do you have any questions or comments at this point? Any of you wanna ask questions?
Uh, I just had a couple of questions, um, from, from the table one, I, I know in the last meeting when you briefed us, um, you, you mentioned there was some communication from the river already, uh, based on the pump test results or your predictive models. I was wondering if you could say, uh, the, from the, from the, the, the analyses that has been done, does, from the pump test, does the water appear to be groundwater in terms of its water quality, heavy metals and, and iron magnes and things like that, or does it seem to be coming from the river, and is that the basis for, I think you said sixty percent of the water is coming from the river? I can rephrase that if it's totally confusing, my question.
No, I, no, I understand what you're getting at, and, um, I'm gonna back up for just a moment to say the pumping test that was conducted was a five day test to meet the standards of Mass DEP, um, which they did. Um, in, in my opinion, uh, the pumping test groundwater levels did not stabilize. Uh, the criteria for stabilization in Massachusetts is less than point zero four feet of drawdown in the last twenty four hours of your pumping test. That's very difficult to determine, um, in a tidally impacted groundwater condition, but it is possible. As a result, um, since it hadn't quite stabilized, um, hydraulically, I'm also suggesting that it hadn't quite stabilized from a perspective getting, um, representative water quality samples for a pumping twenty four seven condition, which is, you know, eventually what this well field will do, it's gonna pump twenty four seven uh, and reach a steady state. And when it does, it will pull a certain percentage of water from the river and a certain percentage from the groundwater aquifer. Um, the delineation of the zone two, uh, which was not very well documented, um, so it leaves me a little bit curious as to how it was done. When you do the mass balance on that, the size of that zone two, um, you can simply take, like, how much this water is coming from the river, how much is coming from the aquifer? By estimating, there's kind of a standard methodology for estimating the amount of recharge in the aquifer. And when I calculate the size of the zone two, which is only on land, it stops at the Merrimack River, which is, um, how we do things here in Massachusetts. Um, yeah, it, it calculates that only forty percent of that water is coming from the aquifer, and so remaining water absolutely must be coming from another recharge source, which is the Merrimack River.
Does the, does the, the metal's profile, um, support that, or is it just because what you're saying is it hasn't reached steady state, so you wouldn't see that sixty percent contribution of, of river water quality as opposed to forty percent of, you know, a profile of groundwater?
I'd say the metal's profile, to me, looked like a groundwater, um, mostly a groundwater signature.
That's why we subjected the ten day test on the next one, so that we can reach a, a stable pumping date.
Correct.
Um, and, and would that also, um, you know, go along with the, with the salinity levels? I mean, that wouldn't be uncommon for groundwater?
No, not, it wouldn't be uncommon for groundwater, um, you know, there, I'd say that this, let me back up. The salinity levels are probably, I'll say specifically, the chloride levels are probably coming from the river. Because you don't have a lot of, I can't imagine they're putting that much salt, you know, on the roads on Dole Place for that to be a huge signature, and what other source of salt would be in the aquifer in that area? Uh, besides, somebody has their own well in the area, and they have a softener, and they're putting it in their septic system, um, that's a potential source. Um, other than that, I can't really see that there's a lot of sources within that watershed.
I, I don't mean to, I, can I, I, I don't mean to be picky and, and, and I, I'm not trying to, um, uh, create anything here, but I was just wondering, um, you, Weston Sampson has identified some deficiencies in their view of the previous work of Tada and Howard, uh, in, in, in terms of, of that previous pump test. And, and I, I just, I wonder what's the explanation for DEP not identifying deficiencies at the time that the pump test was done? Is it, is it the state of the art has changed, or is it, or, or? Or is it, or, or it were, it was D E P just making some assumptions that you're not comfortable making?
It's hard for me to answer for Jim Persky, um. Who was the reviewer on this, uh, I did talk with Jim on, on, so that, yeah, that's hard for me to answer.
Okay, that, that's fine, uh, I, and one other question is. The pump test uh came up with four hundred and twenty-seven gallons per minute. And, and, and it's. And the projection is that you can yield a hundred million gallons a day. There seems to be a, a gap between, you know, I, I, I think you guys quoted six hundred and something gallons per minute is the potential. Versus four hundred and twenty-seven gallons per minute for the pump test. Can you explain that discrepancy, I, I mean, in layman's terms? That, that seems like, you know, you're making a reach of another extra thirty percent or so.
Sure, um, there's two major factors that come into play when you calculate the safe yield after a pumping test. And one is the specific capacity of the well. Um, and the specific capacity is the pumping rate divided by the amount of drawdown. So if, let's say you were pumping a hundred gallons a minute and had ten feet of drawdown, then your specific capacity is ten. Um, gallons per minute per foot of drawdown. And you take your specific capacity and you multiply that by your available water for drawdown, right? Um, in a well field in Massachusetts, you're required to set your pumps at twenty-eight point five feet below ground surface. Um, it's supposed to mimic a suction well field. And the limit of suction is about twenty-eight point five feet. So, um, if you take your available water and multiply by your specific capacity, you're going to get your safe yield. So, a- another, what they did. Is since they had multiple wells involved in this pumping test, because he had three clusters of two and a half inch wells. Um, so when you pump a small two and a half inch well, you can't. Monitor the drawdown at the same time, it's too small, it can't fit instrumentation in there while you're pumping it. So you have to have a kind of a central well to observe drawdown, which is right next to the well that you're pumping. They, because the, the groundwater levels go up and down, your available water goes up and down. And your specific capacity changes throughout the entire pumping test as well. It's a pretty complicated analysis in this tightly influenced aquifer. Um, so I think what happened is. And this is, this is a guess, because there's some documents that I, I haven't been able to review. Uh, because I think there was some back and forth between Tada and Howard and D E P before finalizing the, the permit. Um, they basically used an average specific capacity. Um, because it, it changed over time throughout the pumping test. And then also an average uh available water condition. Um. You know, I, I didn't necessarily agree with, with the approach, however, um, I do agree that the well field is, is good for that yield. Um, because if, if I were going to do it a different way. Um, I would still come up with a value that is um equal or greater than, than the permit that was. Um, approved.
Alright.
Thank you. Question?
Um. For, at the, at, for the time being, it does, I guess the, the lingering question is we, you know, are. Is there a possibility if though, if the site gets developed, if we, if we don't hit that million and we're at six hundred and thirty thousand? Is that changes the equation in terms of the, you know, the, the decision the town, you know, would make? Uh, but, but if, if the, I, I guess if, if Jim Persky and. And Tada and Howard had a conversation and they felt comfortable with. Uh, that extrapolation, um, that, that'd be probably something we'd firm up a little bit, I'm guessing, but I don't know, but. You know, just to.
You, you get a, you're going to get another whack at it, because in order to update the permit, uh, you need to run another pumping test. Um, and what they're requiring right now is not necessarily a, a full. Analysis like was done before, um, you don't need to delineate a new zone two, you don't need to even monitor water levels. Um, basically you just need to pump the well for uh at least five days. Uh, and take water quality samples and submit them to D E P again, so that we can confirm that the water quality is acceptable. Um, because things have changed over time, of course, P F O S wasn't a thing back in two thousand and sixteen, it's certainly a thing now. Uh, so there are, are new analytes that you'll need to address in this uh additional pumping test. But, uh, you know, even though you don't have to do a full hydraulics analysis, um, it wouldn't hurt to take some water levels and. Um, calculate that safe yield uh yet again, just to be comfortable. That, um, the yield is what they say it is.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I, I, I have another quick question, Kevin, um, so. Um, the uh previous report by Tada and Howard had indicated that. A- after six months of operation. And then again in another six, I think it was six months of operation and then a, or drawing on the well. And then another six months after that, that there would be a requirement um to um test to see. If, to determine whether or not the well was under the direct influence of, of. You know, whether the aquifer was under the direct influence of the river, um, but it sounds like. We could pretty, and, and that, that would ultimately affect um equipment costs, you know, install it, installed filtration. Um, but it sounds like. We already know. It's already pretty clear that the well is under the, or would be under the influence of the river. Is that correct, which would then lead to the requirement for that additional filtration? It almost seems like that is even a question at this point. Is that correct?
Rosa.
Yeah.
Sarah, can you answer that?
Yeah, I think we lost Kevin there, um, so. What you're speaking about is the groundwater under direct influence, which is related to the water quality. And that sampling is required, um, you know, per the regulations, you need to do those sampling in spring and fall, following the activation of the well. The water that is coming from the river, as we've been talking about, is, is really the hydrologic and hydraulic connections between the aquifer and the river. And it's not necessarily the same as the water quality being impacted by the river. So there's still a chance that you take those samples and you find out that the water is not groundwater under the direct influence. What we did recommend is doing a round of that sampling at the time you're doing the test wells. Um, to give you kind of the, the indication of whether or not, uh, you'd see that. So if you, you know, do another pumping test and do test wells and you see. Uh, your samples for what, what they call the M P A analysis. And they indicate that it's groundwater or the direct influence at that time, you have a pretty good idea, you're going to. Find yourself in that situation, once you do your sampling, when the well comes online. Um, at this point, it's really difficult to say, um. I would, you know, just given the proximity and how close it is and the fact that there is the, you know, hydrologic connection, uh. You know, there's, there's indicators that it, it could be there, but it's still, it's uncertain. Because it's related to more the water quality than it is as far as the hydrologic connection.
Okay, that's interesting, yeah. Anything else you have you, um, Tom Horgan, um, I don't know if we have Christine or Mark Dickinson here, do either of you have questions? Okay. Anything else? No. So, um. Our next step is that they received your comments?
Yep.
Um, and I, I think they incorporated the comments that I provided.
Yes, yeah, yes, that, that was in the.
Yeah.
Report from last week, yeah.
Do you have comments that you want to provide? Um, you know, on, on the report, so that they can issue the final?
Oh.
I, I don't mean right now, but is, is that something that?
Yeah, no, I had no written comments, I didn't have, I, I was trying to understand, um. A couple of things in here that, you know, not, not being in the order business that I, um. Certain uh, um, terms that wasn't clear to me.
Did you say certain terms?
Yeah, 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 certain terms, uh, he, uh, um. You know, if I'm looking at the report, um. Uh, this is under two water quality evaluation, um. I, I just highlighted things that I didn't fully understand what they were or, or how they would be measured. There's ambient, uh, which has pretty long term pumping test order level slash potential metric fluctuation trends. Um, and I could imagine what that might mean, but I might be wrong, so.
Yeah, and Kevin would be the best to answer that, so I won't speak to it right now, but if you want to provide. Any terms to us that, you know, were unclear or not defined, we can definitely include a more clear definition in the final report that we prepare, if that works.
Put that, uh, someone to wait in, this might be Kevin back home.
Yeah.
Kevin, is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can.
Sorry about that, folks, now I lost internet, I'm calling.
Great, thanks for calling back.
Do you want to ask Kevin a question?
Um, sure, or, you know, maybe we.
Maybe you could provide a list, just to make like a glossary or something?
Sure, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, Kevin, we were just talking about some terms in the, uh, report, specific terms related to the groundwater, um, evaluation. So I think we can provide a little more definition in our report to meet that needs, um, there.
Sure, absolutely, yep, not a problem.
So I guess, are we, do we want to decide now about what metric we want to use? Or is this something we would discuss on the eighteenth, Angus, what, what's your thoughts on that?
I think, um, you know, if you have your questions answered, you, I would assume you might need some time to chew on that, obviously, uh. You know, uh, due to the short notice of this meeting, Chris wasn't able to be here, uh, we recorded it, so he would be a real watch. Seems, it's, it's a big decision, obviously not just with regard to this site, but. Future potential public infrastructure sites, so I think whatever standard or assumption the, uh. Board's going to rely on here ought to be, we ought to assume that's going to be the assumption going forward. Until at some point in the future it could change, but, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Effect, so we want to make sure that the full board embraces when her decision is arrived at, so I would suggest that we continue.
Do you, uh, Water Board have any thoughts on what standard, or you know, what number to use for the sea level rise?
They use them for the standards as a hundred plus two, four hundred plus three.
They're using that for design, but I, Kevin, can you answer that, what, um, what number D E P? Likes, um, permitting to use for sea level rise?
The D E P is recommending using the Climate Adaptation Plan, um, for the year twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen or?
Twenty seventy.
Oh, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, so, so, and, and you know what, I don't recall with the number I saw, it was, I think, seven point nine feet for twenty-one hundred, but I don't recall what it was for. In, in the chart that you showed, I don't recall what it was.
Four and a half feet, yeah.
Sarah, could you provide a copy of the slides that you shared, um, could you send those to Angus, that would be helpful?
Yep.
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see the last slide again.
Yeah.
So I can look at it, or look at it, I can tell you.
It's hard to take it in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright. Can I throw this?
Alright, so, and it's, so whatever is clear, I know you, you all know this, but Weston Sampson is not available for the meeting on the eighteenth, which is why we wanted to get it.
Right, that's why we.
So, so, uh, we'll have the, uh, slides and the report, but we won't have, uh. We, uh.
The experts.
Their participation, so.
Jack, could you?
Well, I, I just, um, I, I am just a little concerned about a hundred year. Horizon or having a water supply for perpetuity.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in the nineteen seventies, West Newbury received its water from Groban. Um, they had T C E issue, that's not that long ago. Um, that's, that's less than fifty years from now, we're looking, uh, if we're looking around twenty seventeen, we're looking around fifty years. I, I, I would be concerned in terms of long-term town planning, um, looking. Uh, in time horizons, horizons too far out. Uh, the, the twenty seventy number may even affect our existing well field. In which case, you know, um, i- if, if there's major infrastructure requirements for any new well development. Whether it's at any of these places or other places we're considering. Um, it's, I think the term was it's a moving target, we, we're just going to have to be adaptive. You know, taking into account the models, but having, you know, contingencies in wherever we develop. To, to improve things or protect things iteratively, if it means treating for salinity. You know, uh, there, it, it, so be it, you know, we're, we're going to need water, you know, and, um. And so I, I think, you know, um. I think, I think the, it's in town's interest to look at what an appropriate horizon would be. Um, in, in terms of these projects and not looking at these projects as perpetuity types of investments.
I mean, do you have a number in mind?
I don't have one, but I think it's, I think the town needs to, you know, uh, get its head around that as well as sea level rise.
Uh, Kevin and Sarah, I don't know if you, I know Angus provided the new report source material, did you have any comments on what you reviewed there as to? You know, whether that. Or, I, I guess as to why you think they chose that a more conservative number?
Hmm, well, uh, let me say this, I didn't read the entire report, I was. Purposely interested in where they came up with the six feet, which is what your recommendation was for us to use. Um, that being said, um, they're obviously a little closer to the action, meaning closer to shore. Um, and some of their wastewater infrastructure is especially vulnerable. Um, so I think that they had some concerns, um. Up, up, you know, about some vulnerable, you know, already existing vulnerable areas of town, you know, obviously Plum Island is a, a, a major. Topic of conversation with respect to sea level rise as well. Um, they've got more going on than, than West Newbury with respect to the infrastructure and the money, the amount of money they spend. Um, on that infrastructure. Um, so that being said, I, you know, it's every town's decision, um, and. It's, I think, important as what you're doing is becoming knowledgeable about what the models are saying. And then, you know, having a conversation internally and making a decision about what you feel comfortable with.
Okay. Great, well, we appreciate you, uh, fitting this in, uh, so that we can move forward and start making some, um, decisions about this. Um. I guess have a great weekend, and we'll be in touch.
Yeah. You too, sorry about my technical difficulties.
Yeah, happens to all of us, so, yeah, thanks a lot, it was, uh, very informative.
Great.
You bet.
Have a good weekend, thank you.
Bye.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Christie didn't seem to have an opinion on the time.
Right, yeah.
I don't know if he's really going to dial in on this or not, but we should encourage.
Do you have a question, you probably should have more knowledge than this, but they're preparing that hundred plus six. For.
Well, there's.
For stormwater and surge, so is that so that they don't have an overflow, or are they thinking more to protect?
Maybe new report?
Right, new report, sorry. We, we was thinking the hundred point six, so I mean, that's probably where they get that. How is that, you know, like, he said, you know, uh. How does that reflect, you know, on us for? Oh, well, you know, we're not worried about. Septics and stuff down there right now for us, so. Something that you probably have a little more insight than I do.
Yeah, I think, I think for new report, um. The hundred plus six, I don't think is really relevant to their, um, to their, uh, super plant. Because, um, my understanding is they're already taught, I mean, there's a long-term understanding that they're going to need to move that plant and, and, uh, it'll probably.
So I, I would probably.
That's what I wanted, if they were bringing the hundred and six, because they were planning on moving the plant, they want to go higher, you know. I, I, you know, I'm sure that, I'm sure that, where they moved it to, it, you know, meets that standard.
Right, because, because if they're a hundred plus three, yeah. And the short plane gets inundated and overflowing, now you've got a big mixing block and everything you messed up.
Right.
But.
Right, um, but I, I think it's rela- relative to essentially all. Uh, municipal infrastructure, you know, they're, they're, I think they're trying to, they, they plan to design everything to that hundred plus six. Right, hundred, current hundred year plus six. Including roads? Um. My guess is that there is, I, I, you know, so I, I don't know exactly, Jack, but my guess is that if it was a major road project. my guess is that there is, I, I, you know, so I, I don't know exactly, Jack, but my guess is that if it was a major road project, um, you know, not just repaving, but you know, if they change an infrastructure, that at this point they would do it to the hundred-year plus six.
Is that one of the type from like a bridge down there too, or they have, I know they said something about raising, I didn't know if that was the reason why they were saying a bridge had to go up, is that because they have to meet that hundred hundred-year flood plane?
Which, 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 which?
The Middle Street Bridge, sorry.
Oh, um.
Is that one, I'm just curious, that was just a question.
Yeah, no, that, and you know what, that, that has, that topic has never been addressed relative to the Middle Street Bridge, um, you know, so typically, I think in the past, you know, Mastox requires a fifty-year design life for something like a bridge.
Yep.
And, so that would put us, you know, you could use for round numbers twenty seventeen as, as, as the frame of reference. Um, so, uh, I don't recall what the difference is currently between in the current, in this new design, which essentially the, in the new design, the, the uh, the deck of the bridge will be uh, at essentially the same level that the existing bridge is at, that's my understanding. Um, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, at one point I glanced, I, I don't remember what I, what I came up with there, but I, I did look at that number and, and tried to correlate it with the hundred-year, the existing hundred-year flood plane, and um, and I don't remember, I don't, I don't remember what I came up with, and, and, you know, that was based on my estimations, which yeah, not gonna be all that clear.
Yeah, my other question too, just because I'm trying to picture where this is, what's the Rock Village Bridge set at? Is that, what elevation do we know? Is that in a hundred-year storm? Is that still passable or?
I, I, yeah, I, I think that's still passable currently, I mean, that is.
Where, where does that fall on a hundred plus six, is what I was, just trying to get a reference.
Right.
Standing at the river.
Right.
How far back do I have to go before I'm going out to sea?
Yeah, right, well, I think, well, actually, if you look at it, the approach on the West Newbury side at a hundred plus six is gone. Yeah, that, that's, that's, I mean, that's been.
That's why I wanted to look at that.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's been flooded before, and, you know, that's one of the things when we do this MVP study, that, that area is gonna be one of the areas under consideration.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we, because we extended the area of interest to include, um, to include that.
If you look at that cross-section that they gave us, what has the elevations, you can get the elevations off, off my map for different areas, and so you can just.
Do that, yeah.
The resolution of those estimates, I mean, it's.
You know, but it gives you a, a basis to start.
Yeah, well, just a, just a rough
idea, you know, it's like.
I mean, if you take a look at the nineteen thirty-six flood, you know, that was just, that's not even a hundred years ago. The Bible, the Radback could drive along the river, and it was at the top of that.
That, that's right, at the top above the door.
Above the door, and that's not plus anything, that was, that was, so, you know.
Yeah.
You, you, you can, you can bet it, the bridge is gone, everything else is, you know, brought this high, it'll be coming through.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, we're in terms of a, of a well field, um, if you're using a hundred plus six, you know, assuming that the flooding events uh, aren't more extreme in their magnitude from what the baseline is, which you're saying essentially is that the baseline is coming up six, so that means that you know, there'll be more availability of water, that, you know, because if it's under, if it's being influenced by the river, you know, there's higher, gonna be, you know, more high static pressure, um, forcing water in in, in, into the, into the aquifer from the river, um, hey, yeah, so, I mean, water will be more available.
Yeah.
But, um, it's, you know, then how do you, how do you use the site? I mean, water will be generally more available because your baseline will be six feet or higher.
But it's gonna cost more to treat it.
Right, right, yeah.
So, um, will you be available on the eighteenth? Because I, I think this decision greatly impacts, you know, the Board of Water Commissioners, I don't know if you could join us? Or if you have comments, if you can get them to Angus ahead of time, I mean, we want you to be part of this conversation, so, um.
That's possible.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm ready.
Right?
So I got a question, just on their review, it was a peer review.
Yeah.
What else? Have they found anything else that they now missed or didn't? I mean, I know they wanted to go to the ten-day test, but is that gonna be enough? I mean, when we go out to retest the water, do we wanna do a ten-plus day test? Whatever, whatever it is to meet that, um, you know, to get that level that he said we didn't achieve last time?
I wonder if it would make sense to, um, you know, to I mean, give, give yourself more latitude if you need it, but.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, you see, if you see stabilization, you know, if.
If you see it at seven days, you don't need to go to ten days.
Exactly, if you see that it's stabilized, but what happens, you know, look at it at ten days and you don't see stabilization, go to twelve, you know.
So then instead of a number of days, perhaps it should be, you know, this, the.
Stabilization or stabilization.
In, in a, you know, specific definition of what that.
Yeah, I mean, at some point you have to probably do a limit as to how, you know.
Yeah, or it's not gonna be a viable site.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Because if, if you go from seven to ten, each of those days you're gonna have more water testing, and so there's potentially more expense, so if you write the contract to say if you reach stabilization, you can stop, but go up to ten days um, to, to try to achieve stabilization.
So maybe, you, you know, if you were to do that, maybe in the contract, there could be essentially an additional day, you know, a cost per additional day.
Right, that's something like that, that's what I was thinking, because I mean, I know, use your, use your low threshold and five and state minimum and, and your high threshold, whatever you can stomach, is being the longest. Um, because I vaguely remember when they did this testing, you know, in fifteen or sixteen or whatever, they were more concerned about how, what they were getting for yield, and they weren't looking for what they were testing for, because they knew they were gonna be doing a six-month test anyhow, so they kinda said, we have our yield, we know, we know what we're gonna get out of it, we're not gonna, you know, but now that things have changed a little bit, we're looking, we wanna check a few more things to make sure we don't have extra testing that we weren't thinking of or treatment or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
It seems to me that when we were doing a lot of different well sites around town, DEP required a ten-day pump test uh, per production.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know if they still do, but uh, it seems to me that we were doing ten days of whack, one of the seven ones we found.
So maybe that's what we should.
Maybe that, you know, like I said, I'm not sure if that's what DEP requires, I think that's what they require then anyway for, for production. Uh, but again, we'd have to, you know, obviously check with DEP to make sure exactly what they're requiring and so on.
Angus, did you say that this, this is one piece of what West Newbury?
It is, yeah, their uh, their contract includes, uh, there were a couple of aspects of the peer review, uh, one was, was what they're focused on now with the, uh, water, uh, testing. Uh, but the other was also to peer review the cost estimates that were prepared in early twenty twenty-one, which obviously would, would have changed by now anyway with the past time. Uh, but that's part of the, uh, that portion of the report in the contract that we signed with them back in June is due by October first, uh, we wanted to accelerate the, the water testing by September first, which they delivered uh, to inform the decision of whether to seek money this fall for additional testing, but we also wanted to be sure that by the time we actually get to town meeting on October twenty-third, we have, uh, a, you know, independent review of the cost estimates, so that is something they are also doing that, that has not been delivered yet.
So, you know, devil's advocate here, if, if we as a board decide that we are gonna use the, the higher number and we don't think that going forward with those places is a good idea, are they still gonna continue to do that second piece of it?
I, I assume, uh, I don't know if they're both out of town or what, I, as you know, they didn't have any availability next week to meet, so I, but I, I assume in order to meet that October first deadline, they're gonna need to keep working until we double up to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it's just a risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else? Let's start the weekend.
We'll find a way on power or control, we know our area, you know why.
Alright, uh, are you ready to do a chair?
Sure.
Okay, okay.